Good morning, and I would like to welcome everyone that's here today for the Planning Board meeting. I would like to call it to order. And if you would, stand and let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no adjustment to the minutes. So we would like public comment. Would someone, anyone that would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
I'm Phil Dudley, and my address is at 218 Sard Street. I want to congratulate the Planning Board for taking up the issue of oversized homes on Oak Island. Visitors and residents alike came here for the character of this island, which was never included these oversized homes with 14 bedrooms. And then when you have, by the way, and you know this, a hotel, really they're hotels, they're businesses. It's a private business when you build a 14-room home on beachfront and then rent it out weekly. And everybody drives, every bedroom has at least one car. There's no place for them. They park on their right of way. They're not getting ticketed like they should. And when you have cars stacked five-deep in a row, car 1, 2, and 3 is not a parked car. That's a car in storage. God forbid there be a fire. And this does sometimes happen with cars. They just instantaneously combust. Well, the whole thing's going to be out of hand before anybody can move the car. So these things are out of character with the island. I want to thank you for taking up this issue. It's overdue.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? With that, I'd like to close with public comment. We are to old business, discussion and review of height limitations on Oak Island. Matt, would you like to?
Sure. As you all know, we reviewed kind of the history of the town's height limitations last month, where they came from, where they stand as of today. It's been kind of, been quite a bit of a long history, especially since we've had multiple local acts, referendums, two towns merging, et cetera. So we reviewed all that last month, as well as what our adopted plans say. So moving forward, there's a couple of ways you can tackle this, in staff's opinion. And there could be more, but one thing to keep in mind that we touched on last month was that depending on how you make a recommendation, it may require a referendum or an amendment of the local act. Staff did try to reach out to the town attorney to get some guidance on what they felt would trigger that requirement. Unfortunately, we weren't able to coordinate a discussion with them prior to this meeting. So just keep all that in mind, that, you know, whatever recommendation you guys make to town council, in the end, it may rise to that level. So some potential strategies you could take to amend the ordinance. The first and maybe the simplest one would be to simply adopt the language from the 1987 local act, which stated that spires, belfries, capolas, antennas, water tanks, ventilators, chimneys, and other appurtenances usually required to be placed above the roof level and not intended for human occupancy. You know, you could include a blanket statement in the ordinance, basically revising those exemptions, to include that list. Secondly, you could seek to further refine that list of exemptions. This is in Section 2.15, which is the section that you were asked by the town council to take a look at. The current list includes church spires, chimneys, industrial smokestacks, town water towers, industrial conveyors, communication facilities, parapet walls not exceeding three feet in height, and mechanical apparatus for commercial structures. The current ordinance also includes a list of items that are not allowed above the height exceptions, including belfries, capolas, domes, monuments, observation towers, television and radio antenna, aerials, towers, flagpoles, and similar structures. There's a question of whether that's totally consistent with that 1987 local act, because it does include belfries, capolas, and antennas in that list of things that are not exempt, whereas the 1987 ordinance or local act includes those, its items not affected. One thing you could do, one question that came up is parapet walls, they can be used as safety for human occupancy on the roof level. So if you have a three-foot parapet wall, that may meet the criteria for safety. So let's say you build your roof line up to the 41 or 35, depending on what flood and hazard zone you're in, and you say, well, I have a three-foot allowance for the parapet wall. Well, now that roof is potentially occupiable if it meets all the other building and access and safety requirements. So you could stipulate that when they exceed, that that can't be used as a means of human occupancy, because the original local act stated that those items not be intended for human occupancy. So there's some potential room for clarification there. And then there was some discussion about mechanical items not exceeding the maximum You could add that, add certain mechanical items, but that could potentially require a referendum or amendment to the local act. Just want you to be aware of that, because typically those mechanical items aren't, you know, intended for human occupancy. So there's a question there. You could try to further refine that list by trying to identify items that are usually required to be placed above the roof level and not intended for human occupancy, and clarifying those in the ordinance. And then in looking at the items that aren't required to be placed above the roof level or intended for human occupancy and saying, you know, right now we have a list of things that are exempt and things that aren't exempt. So you could try to figure out some more uses that, you know, fall under that classification that aren't explicitly listed in that local act. But right now, our current exemption list is pretty reflective of items that are regularly seen above the roof line of structures. You know, if you do a quick research about things that are usually placed above a commercial building, you get, you know, communication equipment, mechanical equipment, things like that, which is largely what our current exemption list is. As I mentioned, one of the simplest things to do is to largely try to reflect the local act, as well as, you know, providing some stipulation in the ordinance that those items can't be used for human occupancy. You could include a simple statement in the ordinance that any item placed above can't be used, can't be intended for human occupancy. And that's mainly to ensure compliance with the local act, as it's been interpreted and applied by the town up until now. So really, at this point, what we'd ask for is kind of some strategy recommendation and what you'd like to see, if there's any items that you feel like should or shouldn't be added, and what direction you want to take. And then we can, we can work on drafting those into a recommendation for next month.
Sounds good. Thank you. I am going to start with each one. Gene Watt, would you like to see what your opinion, recommendations on the height limitations?
In a perfect world, 41 feet, including everything. But that would definitely take an act of Congress, per se, literally, to do it. I would like the idea of, I mean, the parapet wall, the three-foot parapet wall is for safety, but I would want to exclude, you know, try to get rid of these rooftop deals the best way we can for, in the file, what can and can't be used for human occupancy. Would probably be the best thing.
Yeah, I think my biggest issue is the human occupancy. I think eliminating the loophole that allows those to be used for human occupancy. I go back to the motel and the fact that because we had electric, I mean, equipment up there, we then put an elevator up there, which is deemed mechanical, and then we end up putting a roof on it that we go from 41 to 55. And I just think that is, I just, a maximum height to me, whether we stay at 41 and then allow for three feet of electrical equipment, because I can understand for commercial especially, you've got air conditioning, and those are large units. You've got equipment that makes sense to put on a roof, and therefore you would need a parapet to protect that. I think where we continue on, it opens the door, is now you can have an elevator, or you have to have an elevator to service it. I would love to see if there isn't a way you could require stairs to be, you know, as your access, your ingress and egress off of the roof, but not require or not allow for the elevators that seem to start, you know, the slippery slope towards the human occupancy. So.
I want to stop right there. Steve, I have a question, please. Steve, if, are you required to have an elevator to service mechanical equipment on the roof?
No.
Okay. You're not required to have an elevator, which if we say that anything over 41 feet is not intended for human occupancy, would that eliminate the need for the elevator?
Not necessarily.
They could still put that in, but.
What would the need for the elevator be?
Because it had four floors. Because there was four stories, it was a building that was greater than four stories. She had that ground parking level, is it three levels of rooms and then the rooftop? So it's like five stories total. Matt? I don't remember the design. If it was three levels of residential.
Yes, that hotel was four, the ground level and the three floors.
And because, and because they did allow, now, you know, Matt did talk to me about the appurtenance, the, says the appurtenance is not supposed to be intended for occupiable space. So you can't, you can't occupy a parapet wall. I think it's, I think you said slippery slope, or somebody did a minute ago, and I think that's where we're heading. If we keep pushing this, we're going to have to go to referendum. I mean, from what I'm hearing, being said this morning. But the parapet wall is not occupiable, but I don't think you can really prevent somebody from occupying a roof if it's common. It's done throughout the U.S. and other countries where they utilize the rooftops. Parapet wall, again, normally it's a appurtenance that you'll see extended above the height. We do have a max set of that, of three feet. Commercial application actually had the type 42, but their floor was six inches below, so they got that, and they maintained the three foot above. I don't know if, it sounds good to try it that way, but I think Matt definitely said, I don't know if he's gotten the opportunity to speak with the town attorney on this or not yet. But I mean, we've just got to be careful that we don't trigger the referendum.
Personally, I'm not afraid of a referendum.
It's expensive.
It may be expensive, but this is a very heated issue across the island, and I feel like our role should be to get it right, to get the language to be what we think it should be. And if that means that it needs to go to a referendum, by the way, the town council's going to be the one to vote on that, you know, whether it goes to the town council, not us. But I'm just saying, I respect that, and I do understand the cost of that. But I think in certain instances, we are talking about something that is probably one of the top two or three issues that, you know, our residents really care about.
And you also mentioned that 55-foot height. Now, some of that height increase on that was because council wanted the aesthetics. They didn't just want that flat roof up there. So the architect designed a very steep pit.
I'm not saying there wasn't a rationale, I'm just saying, the referendum says 41, and somehow we can go up to 55. And I'm just saying, I think that.
Or higher.
Or higher. I just feel like that is not congruent with the intention of the referendum and what was passed with the 36 and 41. I feel like that's where we need to go back.
I think it is, because it says in other appurtenances that you normally see above the roof, and you normally see an elevator shaft above a roof line. There's a, and I've seen stairwell, enclosed stairwells that come up above the roof line too, again, in other appurtenances.
This is that gray area that if people can't, conceptually, they agree on something, and they might even agree on a three-foot parapet, they might even agree on mechanical. But then when it gets to actuality, you go, oh crap, I didn't realize that. To me, those unintended, you know, areas of wiggle room are the things we should be trying to seek out and limit those unintended things. So again, and I don't want to take it too much time.
Okay, I understand your perception, but we've also have to understand the General Assembly has certain guidelines that we cannot go above without a referendum. And then they have.
Oh, sure. Sure.
And they are watching different municipalities and overriding some of these decisions. So I understand what you're saying.
Is there something I've said, though, that you feel might get in, like, might be abutting that kind of a line? Just so I understand, that's all, just so I understand.
Steve, if we say not intended for human occupancy, how is that monitored and enforced?
That'd be a better question for Matt.
Yeah, so we typically look at, usually when we look at whether something's intended for human occupancy, is there a, is there a floor there that, you know, would allow occupancy above that? Is it heated, cooled, air conditioning, things like that? You know, obviously, if the space isn't air-conditioned, especially as hot as it's been now, this is not necessarily going to be intended for human occupancy. So we'd look at the floor level, what's included on the building plans, what type of, you know, is it heated, cooled space, et cetera, things like that, to determine whether or not something's an occupiable space or not. Now, if you've got a, let's, let's say you've got a spire, you know, but the, the floor of the spire is at, you know, 10 feet below the maximum height, and there's no other floors above that, then that would, that space above the height limitation would not be intended for human occupancy, because it's, you know, that much larger.
Yeah.
So yeah, we'd all make a, we'd take a look at the building plans that get submitted and make a determination from there.
And have we, I'm sorry. And inhabitants, are you equating those two things?
I'm sorry.
Occupancy versus inhabitants, like, I hear you say climate-controlled. The way I'm reading occupancy is, there was a conversation at the particular motel talking about, are you going to have parties up there and allow for, you know, it was going to be an open observ, you know, could you put lounge chairs and, you know, do some other things up there? That was the discussion at the town council meeting, and that's what I was thinking occupancy was, are you, is it different? Am I wrong on that word?
No, it would depend on the type, the type of occupancy you're looking for. So yeah, like a rooftop deck where it's, you know, people going up and actually having access to it versus an enclosed structure like a, like a spire or some of these other things that are exempt.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Matt. Sorry, I was target, I was lasering in on the enclosed things, because that's.
No, 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 I appreciate it.
So I'm reading that as there's heavily judgment within that, Matt, right, as to what's habitable or what's not?
Well, I mean.
There's a lot of discretion, or have we defined that specifically somewhere?
I don't know that it's defined anywhere in our ordinance specifically, but typically if there's an occupiable space on a building, set of building plans, it's usually denoted. You know, the hotel specifically had like rooftop deck, you know, so we would look at it and say, okay, that, that's intended for, for people to actually go up there and occupy that space. Whether or not it's a judgment call, I mean, any determination that gets made by the planning staff is always appealable to the board of adjustment. So anytime when we do have to make a call on something one way or another, if someone disagrees with us, it's always appealable. So, you know, if somebody came in and said, no, this isn't an occupiable space, and we said it was, then it would be the board who, the board of adjustment has a quasi-judicial hearing to get to the root of the matter as to whether it is or not, you know? And that's a citizen board.
Yeah, my point with that is, if we were to add that stipulation within, you know, 2.15, then it seems that we should then define what that means specifically within the UDO, so that it does not leave so, so much room for debate, for argument, for.
Misinterpretation.
For misinterpretation, exactly.
Yeah, and you could define.
That's the reason I asked that question.
The State Building Code defines occupiable space.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll have to defer to the State Building Code, or we can put the State Building Code definitions.
I'm done.
You're done?
Oh, yeah, oh, thank you, sorry.
Oh.
Okay, for me, I guess just things that I considered as we, as I looked through this for discussion, it seems almost like there could be different parameters for residential versus commercial, right? Because, you know, things that might go on top of a residential house, like antennas or, you know, chimneys, things like that, seem to have certain reasonable limitations. But then on the commercial side, you have, it's, it's a lot more to consider, right? And we saw that with, with the hotel request. And some things that I looked up with, you know, things like water tanks, HVAC systems, things like that, that are large, that could be on top of commercial. And I'm just, I mean, I just throw it out there, is whether we feel our current ordinance covers residential versus commercial properly would be something to think about, I think. And then there was some more, some information that I saw, Steve, you know, the elevator became a big discussion with respect to that hotel special use request. And it seems like there's a elevator bulkhead versus a different, an elevator car. So in other words, is that, are those two different things, just for everybody's edification and education? An elevator bulkhead, does that mean the car goes all the way to the top of the building? Do you know?
Not familiar with that.
Because it seems like some towns, they basically say that the only thing allowed is the elevator bulkhead, which seems like just some mechanicals of it. A car can't go to the top of the roof.
Must be like the shaft, the equipment, maybe.
Yeah, something else that I saw that I thought was interesting. And then I think that some towns also do what's called a contextual height limit, meaning that, you know, things, height limits are comparable across adjacent buildings, things like that. And some language that I saw said, regardless of max height limit imposed by lawful article, a contextual height limit shall be applied. So some towns put that stipulation in there to cover, right? So.
Consider it ambiguous.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say.
I said I consider it a little ambiguous. You know, it's become subjective and, you know.
So, but these are just things that other towns are doing, I think. And then finally, as to the recommendations that I think Matt's put forth here, I agree with my colleague Dural as to adding the, you know, the human occupancy limitation would be proper. You know, I had a question as to whether or not the changes that town council made in 2018 and 2019, should those have required a referendum to be changed? Because, so here we are, right, and we have this, so, and the fact, it's, it's a little, I have to say frustrating, that our, our town attorney has not, you know, given us the feedback about what clarify means in terms of the local act. I mean, these things were certainly, exceptions built were certainly clarifications to these exceptions, and, and apparently there was no referendum at that time. So I don't know if that's a precedent we're allowed to follow, so that now we can make changes, or I think this legal opinion on what we have to do is critically important at this point. So I just wanted to stress, Matt, I know you, I know you get it.
I'm right there with you. And it's really, it's not so much, you know, the, it's even up for this board to decide, as someone pointed out, you know, whether or not to pursue a referendum or a local act amendment would ultimately be a decision of, of the town council one way or another. But it would behoove you guys to know, you know, what, what your recommendation would mean for later on.
Right, why would we, why would we push something to town council that, you know, is going to require, you know, we need to be able to explain to them.
I'm with you 100%.
This is what we recommend, and this is what it will entail, right? I mean, that's, I think that's our responsibility as an advisory board. But, but generally, I think maybe another option, option four is out there. If, if we wanted, Matt, I think I sent you a copy of this, I actually found that the town of Currie Beach, they have the, the local act exceptions, but then they went through and derived some limits to the exceptions, and they put some definitions around what those exceptions could be, how they were specifically defined, and granted, it's a lot of wordy stuff, but to me, that would be another option for us that would maybe not require a referendum, but would allow us to go in and be more specific and be more protective with the ordinance as it currently exists, with the exceptions as they're currently defined. So that was just a thought that I had, and an idea.
Are you good?
I'm done.
Thank you, Gary. Mark?
I think all my points really and thoughts have been covered, so I won't rehash it all. But I will say that I think one of the most concerning things to me is getting that answer as to are we legal as far as what has transpired and where do we actually stand now? If we aren't, any changes we're making just complicates it that much more. So I don't think we should be making recommendations on changing things when we don't know what we're changing is even legal. And it seems to me that would be a pretty quick and easy question to get answered.
Thank you.
I think, I think it's pretty clear that we want to change it, and it clearly states no changes without a public referendum. So, you know, I think Dural's on the right track. We should, we should get a public referendum and get that vote. You know, I mean, we get the council to okay it and budget it, see how the taxpayers feel about that, and then we come back. Once we know that we can do so, then we start changing it to what the people want.
Sure. Mel?
Well, you know, I, I agree that we really need our town attorney, and, you know, I understand he's been sick. I don't really understand why, maybe there's not somebody else in his practice that can substitute for us, or maybe we need to seek a separate counsel, you know, while he's not available, because we, you know, we have these questions. I'm sure there are other questions that we need answers to, but, you know, I personally think we need to resolve it and stick with whatever we're, we're allowed to with the previous referendum. I mean, it's not important enough to me to spend that much of tax dollars on a referendum. But I do have a question. If anything above that height is not supposed to be meant for, to be habitable, you know, is there a way to have that in our ordinance? And when someone brings a plan to you, basically, you, it would be approved with the understanding that, you know, maybe somebody's going to go up there to serve us whatever they have to serve us, but, you know, the, the general public is not going to be up there.
Right, yeah.
So if we have that in our ordinance, let's say then we approve it, and there's a party going on up there on the roof, would we have any recourse to, to go back and shut the business down, or?
Well, zoning doesn't typically shut a business down, I'll say that. We would, we would pursue ordinance violation where there were one. Typically, what you see is that when, especially when someone does a major or a minor commercial development, they have a, a set of plans, you know, we, there's some, you know, some opportunity for enforcement when people use something in a way that's not indicated on their plans. You know, if you have a, let's say you have a business that was permitted as one thing, and you try to switch it to another way, you need to come get a change of, change of use and get all that permitted as well to make sure it's compliant with the zoning, et cetera. So yeah, there would be some opportunities there for ordinance enforcement. And I think it, you know, based on the statute language that, that I've reviewed and seen, you know, it sounds like maybe what you're getting at is including a phrase in the ordinance that any exemption shall not be, you know, occupied. I mean, I, I think that's consistent with, with what I was recommending. You know, you could just have a simple phrase in there. You know, you could just have a simple phrase in there, you know, added to that list of exemptions that would, you know, the, the exemption list is, from what I understand, it's trying to clarify those things. But, you know, a broad statement could, could add some weight to it as well. You know, to, to clarify that, hey, this, anything that's up here that is exempt is not intended for occupancy.
But to David's point, right, I mean, that's a clarification of 2.15. So does that require a referendum?
Yeah.
It's still a clarification.
And I think it goes back to Steve's statement, you know, a peripheral wall cannot be occupied. It's a wall, it's not a room, it's not a space, it's a wall.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so that, that's why we're, as we said last month and this month, you know, we want some legal advice just to, to give you guys. Now, you know, if you make a recommendation, obviously the, the town attorney is at town council, he looks at the agenda, you know, that, that would be part of that discussion for their end. But like I said earlier, I think it would be in y'all's interest to know what process here forward into town council one way or another. So I, I under, I understand, I guess, everybody's.
So just to be clear, Matt, what you're suggesting is keeping 2.15 as it sits and adding the language with respect to limiting for not human occupancy? Is that generally what is, what's being discussed? Okay.
But if you add, if you add to it, you're changing it.
Right.
What is the, what is the cost, what is the perceived cost of a public referendum?
Matt, or Lisa?
I do not know, we'd have to run that through finance probably.
While we've been sitting here, I emailed the board of elections, so hopefully we'll get an answer soon.
She's on it.
Maybe not before the meeting ends, but we'll find out.
Which is going to be more affordable, the cost of that or the cost of lawsuits?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm going to advocate for you guys to, and the town in general, to, you know, follow whatever procedures are required by the state statute. So, you know, if it's, if it's, don't change it without a referendum, I'm not going to recommend. And if we get in front of the town attorney, he says, now you need a referendum to enact this change, you know, then that, that's what the town staff's going to say, hey, we need to, we need to make sure we're following the right procedures. And, you know, there, there were referendums, but they were about 30 years ago at this point. And it was the town of Yopon Beach and Long Beach when that was done. So I'm sure things have, have changed a lot in, in the interim. So as far as what one would look like, you know, like Lisa said, she's reached out to the board of elections, so. And, and then with a, you know, even if it was to request, you know, the general assembly amend the local act, which has obviously been done several times, you know, we have to wait, they're adjourned right now. We have to wait for them to come back into session. We have to have a, a, a assembly man who, or woman who's willing to, you know, sponsor the change for us and get it introduced and, and all that as well. So there, there's timetables associated with all this, regardless of what you recommend.
Yeah.
What I see is if it's, if it's okay for us just to make that change with the single line about limiting for human occupancy, then that's an easy thing for us to do here locally. If that's not possible, then I think if we have to go to a referendum, my thought would be that we clean it up and we do it right with the referendum.
Right.
Agreed.
Yeah, and, and just for, for everyone's knowledge, the, what the, what we're required to ask in the referendum is, the, the, the changes have to already be recommended and written down, because the referendum is not, should the town change the height or clarify? It's should the town adopt this ordinance and the effects of the ordinance? So there would already have to be a, a draft out there for people to decide on.
Understood.
I, I, I didn't want anybody to think that we could just ask for a referendum to just clarify our change of height. We need to know what those clarifications are prior to the referendum.
So with all discussion, what we need to ask Matt is, one, try to get up with the town attorney again and see what course we need to take. Two, once you get that for our next meeting, would it be possible to have a recommended?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think in, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think in terms of what I'm hearing from the board, there, there's kind of some general consensus as far as, you know, some, some simple but potentially impactful changes that I can go ahead and start working on drafting as far as occupancy, you know, things of that nature. And that might be a question that the town attorney has too, you know. What actually do you want to change out of it? So that, that feedback's good, and we can start working on it from there.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'll check in with the administration to see if there's any other resources that we can reach out to if for whatever reason we can't tap down our, our town attorney.
Find out a legal answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
David, I would also like, with that answer is, from the attorney, if they can get one, is where we stand with the changes that have previously been made? Or, or what are we actually going by? What is actually legal at this point? Because I think there's really a question of what's transpired and whether that's correct or not, so.
Awesome, if at our next meeting, our town attorney could be here, and if he can't, can we get a substitute? I mean, I, I understand he's, he's had, he's been ill, and I'm, I am definitely sympathetic of that. But we can only linger so long without.
Yeah, I, I can ask the town administration to reach out and see if that's, that's something that we arrange.
Because what we're talking about, we need some kind of legal advice on what direction to go to form a suggestion to the town council.
Absolutely.
Well, and if, and, and if to Mark's point, if the 2019 revision can't stand, right, based on the legal opinion, we have to do something anyway.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, new business, large home agenda from, request from town council. Go ahead, Matt.
You kicked this one off too? All right.
Yes, yes.
All right, so at the, the June town council meeting, the town directed the planning board to take a look at a few things. Basically, that motion asked for the planning board recommendation on related, the single family dwellings applicable to new residential construction on the island proper and in the R7 zoning districts on the mainland. They asked you to look at a few things. First, eliminating the special use permit process, considering two options. One, a blanket limitation in those areas for new home construction to a maximum of 3,500 square feet. Option two would be to set a floor area ratio with that ratio being .45, and then limiting new house construction to 4,000 square feet. Both of these options would consider part one of this, which would be eliminating the special use permit process. And I'll get into what our current ordinance is in, in just a minute, and we'll do a full summary of that. They did ask the planning board to provide a detailed review of each option for pros and cons as part of your recommendation. And then they set a timeframe for that for August 26th and the council vote on September 10. Your August meeting is August 15th, I believe. Let me check my calendar here. Yes, August 15th, so you basically have until your next meeting to meet this timetable that the town council has, has set forward for you. So what is, what is all this? What does our ordinance say? What do our adopted plans say? What do these options do? We'll kind of have a, a very brief discussion set in the table. And basically what staff needs from you guys at this point is, you know, what in, what information do you need to see to, to help you craft that recommendation, pros and cons list, et cetera? What can I bring back to you next month as a part of that discussion and recommendation process? So is there analysis information, you know, what type of things you might need to, to help you along that way? So this, first, I mean, obviously, if you have, you know, general thoughts and discussion, you know, feel free. But what I really need from you is, hey, I feel like I need to see X, Y, Z in order to help me make a, make a good recommendation on this, so. Current ordinance, what do we have right now? We have three classifications for single family dwellings in our ordinance. They're included in your agenda packet. The single family dwelling, or dwelling, single family small, that is anything that doesn't exceed 3,999 square feet. Dwelling, single family large, that goes from 4,000 to 5,000 square feet. And then dwelling, single family mainland, which does not include a square footage stipulation in it right now in the ordinance. So if you're north of the intercoastal, there's no stipulation on house size. The single family small is permitted use. And the dwelling, single family mainland are permitted uses in several zoning districts, R20, R9, R7, R6, R6NF, R6MH, ONI, and CLD. And in addition, dwelling, single family small is permitted in the CR zoning district, which is a zoning district that's exclusively on the island, so makes sense why that's included there. Dwelling, single family large is considered a special use with supplemental regulations in the R20, R9, R7, R6, R6MF, R6MH, CR, and CLD zoning districts. There's quite a few supplemental regulations, I won't belabor all of them. Basically, mainly dealing with things that you might see in a special use permit application, public health, safety, conditions and specifications, property, adjacent property values. There are some more technical specs like the requirement for adequate ingress, ingress of 12 feet, additional setbacks, screening for garbage and recycling containers, water and sewer permits, et cetera. So quite a few, as you know, special use, special uses have to get a special use permit. In order to get a special use permit, town council holds a quasi judicial hearing. If you've never been to one, they're a court-like setting where evidence is presented, basically establishing criteria. The four criteria we use currently are, is whether the use will materially, materially endanger public health, safety. It doesn't meet all the required conditions and specifications. Will it substantially injure the value of adjacent property or that the use is a public necessity? And finally, that the location and character of the use is developed according to the plan submitted and will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity to the land use plan. So in order to, under our current ordinance, in order to establish a home in the, a dwelling, single family large, you have to meet the, not only meet the supplemental regulations, but you have to come get a special use permit and prove in a quasi judicial hearing that you, you meet those four criteria, as well as any supplemental regulations. Planning board in, looked at this a couple of years ago in 2022. We included the agenda memo from the town council meeting based on the planning board recommendation at the time. The council took up a motion bas, to implement a townwide 4,000 square foot cap, eliminate the special use permit townwide, increase lot sizes requirements from 13,000 to 20,000 square feet, and incorporate the standards that were included in that recommendation. And those supplemental standards would apply to homes over 3,500 square feet. That motion failed three to two. In addition, in that agenda packet from 2022, there's land use plan considerations as well as maps and breakdowns of home sizes on the island as of 2022. So quite a bit of information for you to digest there. I won't belabor all that, but it's included in your agenda packet, it's quite a bit of information there. So as far as what town council has asked you to, to take a look at, the first bullet point of eliminating the special use permit process, staff's opinion is that this is generally consistent with a comprehensive land use plan. The land use plan recommends that the UDO be a simpler, more flexible, and easily administered regulatory document, certainly a quasi judicial hearing. And having to meet those requirements is not a simpler process. And in addition, an increased staff level approval, so eliminating that special use permit process certainly meets those two recommendations of the land use plan. Looking at options one and two, the staff and the planning board both considered essentially setting a hard cap in 2022. So that information is included in your agenda packet as a part of that 2022 consideration. As well as, like I said, there's a breakdown of square footage of homes as of, as of 2022. So you can definitely take a look at that and come to your conclusions there. And in addition, the, the town essentially has a hard cap right now on the island of 4,000, of 5,000 square feet. You know, the, the difference is over four requires a special use permit. But even if you get a special use permit, you can't build over five. It's just not a permitted use on the island. I will talk a little bit about floor area ratio, because that's, we talked about it in the table of uses some, but just want to, you know, reiterate some of those things. Option two would establish a floor area ratio of .45, and then a hard cap of 4,000 square feet. So I included what that would mean for certain lot sizes based on the minimum lot size in various zoning districts. And these are typically indicative of all of the minimum lot sizes in the town. Even though we have multiple R6 zoning districts, the, the lot sizes are consistent. So in the R20, if you had a 20,000 square foot lot, you'd be capped at 4,000, because .45 of 20,000 would be over, so you'd run into that hard cap. Same thing for R9, where you have a 9,000 square foot lot. R7 with a 7,500 square foot lot, you'd run into the floor area ratio first. So that would be 3,375 square feet. And then R6 at a lot size of 6,600 square feet, your floor area would be 2,970. That's based on the minimum lot size, so obviously if you buy two lots, combine them in some way to make one bigger lot, obviously you might run up into that 4,000 square foot cap instead. Like, say you got two R6 lots and combined them into one. That .45 goes up, but you're still stopped at, at 4,000 under this. Also, in a floor area ratio, the floor area ratio deals with the, it's a little bit different from impervious surface coverage, and it deals with the floor area of the structure. And it's based on the number of floors you have, right? So if you, let's say you're in the R6 and you want to build a one-story home. That one-story home would be 2,970 square feet. Let's say, okay, well, I want to do two. Well, then each floor would be, it would, you'd just basically divide that in half. So you'd have 1,485 for each floor, for the floor area. And if you wanted to build three, it'd be 900, 990 square feet. So it's not like you get that 2,970 and get to build as many floors as you want at that square footage. It, it scales up as you go. I also want to point out that the, the town does have a limitation for built upon area in residential development, and we've talked about this a little bit too, that's your impervious, impervious surface coverage. That's 45%. But I did want to point out that the built upon area and floor area ratio are a little bit different. Built upon area includes hardscape that's not pervious, so concrete, asphalt, things of that nature, that, that counts towards your 45% total. Whereas those things don't count towards your floor area ratio. So just want to make sure we clarify that there. And then the last two points, the, the fourth one is basically scheduling, which we talked about a little bit earlier. And then the, the planning board being asked to create a detailed review of each option, including pros and cons. So that's basically what we need for next month, is what kind of information do you need to make a recommendation to try to evaluate those pros and cons, et cetera? That, that's what I'm looking for, for, for this month's discussion. Certainly, if you have general feedback or anything else, you can let it fly.
Can I, Jane?
Yes.
Yes.
In the floor area plan, does that include decking or is that just livable space?
It's livable space.
What kind of questions would I need answered? If we went with the floor area plan, and I know you've got your little map over here with all the little houses and stuff. I mean, I just wonder how many houses we're going to kick into non-conforming if we go to the floor area plan? That's one thing that concerns me because I've never bought or sold a house or a property that's non-conforming. You know, I know if it's 3,000 square feet and I can only build 2,970, you know, I know I can go back and rebuild it, but does it pass person to person? Does insurance cover it? I don't know that answer. You know, I'm still the size, we are arguing over .5% of the house, of the parcels on the land that have a house over 4,000 square feet. I mean, and even if you go back to the 3,500, it's 1.2%. So I mean, that, that's the part that gets me. I mean, we're in the miniscule. To me, just like, I'm sorry to get his name, Mr. Dudley said, the parking and the noise, we can change all this we want to, it's not going to change the parking and the noise. I mean, are we trying to figure out? I mean, I know town council wants us to set some kind of standard for the, the housing and we'll do that. But that's still, the concern I hear is the parking and the noise. And you know, you can have a 3,000 square foot house and you can put as many people in there as you want. I mean, I can have a living room and put six bunk beds in it if I want to, you know? So, but yeah, if that makes sense. Go ahead, Daryl.
Well, I think you raised an important point about the non-conforming. I know that Councilman Chulo had as a part of his original, original recommendation, and I was very glad to hear it because we talked a lot about it on the campaign, the notion of grandfathering versus non-conforming. So if your home is not within a boundary, I think we have to deal with that issue because I do think it's a tough decision for us or the town council to just deem another home non-conforming without having a heck of a lot. And I wouldn't want to be deemed non-conforming. So I think we do have to deal with that. Matt, I'm, I'm just curious, you won't know this now, but you know, how many SUPs have actually been put in since this ordinance went into place? I don't know if we keep that kind of record. And then of that number, how many have actually been approved?
Yeah, I can research that.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I also think his question is a key one, and that is if you go to the floor area ratio, how many homes then will be deemed? And that's a tougher one because you've got the whole island now to have to do that math against. But, but that's an important one. Those are, those are my two key things that I think we got to get our hands around. I, I do want to say, though, I think the house size is the easy to see issue that we want to deal with, but I do believe that, is that really the issue or is the issue something bigger than that? Like the number of occupants in a home and things like that? And I know we've tried to tackle bedroom size, the number of bedrooms and things like that, but I think in evaluating the size of a home, because I'll be honest with you, Phil, I don't care what house, size house you live in. If you can afford a 3,000 square foot house, I think that's wonderful, you know? If you can afford a 1,200 square foot house, I think that's wonderful. You live here, you should have the ability to live in a home that you live here with. And, and I really believe strongly about that. Where we all seem to have a little bit of a difference is now when we're talking about these investment homes that, that just stack people in them and things like that. To me, that is a very different issue, and we seem to have to deal with them both at the same. And I want us to really be creative here or think, I, I don't believe we should be impacting negatively people who are buying here to live here, to settle an issue about the people who don't live here, okay? Or the people who buy for an investment. And I do think that's more than a black or white kind of a solution. I think we've got to get a little bit into the meat to understand. So I'll just throw that out there, Matt. There's nothing that you can really go and research from that, but I think we need to be thinking about those two, just like you raised the issue of there's the commercial, you know, building height and the, and then there's the residential. Are they the same or, or should we be dealing with those differently? And so I would just throw that into that bucket. That's it.
Very good.
I, I've said this over and over again, this, you know, this board is the guardian of the, of the land use plan. That's why we're here. That's what we, that's the thing that we, that guides us, that directs us on our actions. And it's very specific in the land use plan as it currently exists about small-town environment. This is a community, and the homes need to have some level of affordability. And so my issue with this and, and the reason I think this, I would support some changes is just to make sure that, you know, our town does remain affordable so that people can live here. And I think that, right? And, and, and right now, it's not, right? It's, it's a challenge for us. I think that's why I think we're having this directive come to us, is, is there a way the planning board and the town council can help with that, right? So for me, to look at this, I, I think there is some justification for house sizes relative to the lot size. I think that makes sense for your neighbors, for the community itself. I think that the scale and the alignment with the lot is important, and I think that's what the, the council's item two, I believe it is, is with respect to the floor area ratio is what they're trying to get at, right? It's just houses that are on scale with the lot size. Matt, help me because I was looking at the APA site, and they define floor area ratio as gross exterior area. And they say that includes porches, breezeways, elevators, decks, parking, all that. So is that incorrect? Because I thought you just said something different. So let's, I want everybody to be clear on what floor area ratio actually specifically means.
Yeah, absolutely. It's typically going to, in, in my experience, it's typically going to include the enclosed floor area of a structure. Certainly, it would depend on how the town defines it. You know, you could define it in a way that includes those breezeways, et cetera. Largely, I, I think the, the town in the, the past has recognized some exceptions for those, you know, open stairwells, decking, et cetera. In a lot of instances, it's allowed to encroach into side yard setbacks, things of that nature. So I definitely think in how we pursue this, you know, we want to look at how we regulate those things in general throughout the town. You know, do we want to count it towards the floor area ratio when, on one end, when on the other end, we're saying, well, you know, you can go three feet into the side yard setback with this open stairwell, but it's also going to count towards your, now it's going to count towards your floor area ratio. We're accepting it in one end and including it in the other, which may raise some, some difficulty for folks. But yeah, I mean, it would end up depending on how you define it.
Okay. So that, that, I just wanted to throw that out for the board because that would be something we would consider if we, because those things would theoretically, by theory, be counted, right?
And the, 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 the current square footage limitation that we have now is looked at as heated and cooled square footage. So like, if you come in with a, a house plan and you've got, you know, 3,800 square feet heated and cooled and a 200 square foot deck on the back or 250, you don't go into that large house size because that's not heated and cooled. So keeping it with the, with the heated, the enclosed floor area would be consistent with how we look at it now, I guess is what I'm getting at there, yeah.
But as I read it, I thought it meant exterior parameter, diameter measurements, right?
Yeah.
Exterior wall measurements is typically how, that's how people, municipalities define floor area ratio, isn't that right?
Yeah.
Isn't that an easier measure, right? Truly, you can walk up and...
Well, yeah, you can. And that's how the tax office looks at it. So if you look at that 2022, you know, that, that's all really the data that I can readily pull. And even that sometimes, you know, requires me to make a couple of asks of the county for those tax records. But when they, when they look at the tax square footage of your house, they look at the exterior walls. Now, one thing that we noted is when, when you go in and look at a building permit, they're looking at the interior floor area.
Right. A vaulted ceiling would decrease the heated square footage.
Yeah, a lot of times the, the tax record is higher than what was permitted because they're measuring the outside versus that, that floor in there as well.
Yeah.
So a lot of these that are, especially ones that are close, or we've actually had a couple that have kind of an open deck that's inside, kind of inside the structure, and that doesn't count towards, you know, whether you're a large home or a small home. But when the tax office comes out and measures it, they don't know that that is an open deck that's kind of in the center of the house. So that actually ends up getting added. So sometimes those numbers are inflated, I guess.
But floor area ratio would, would pull that in. So you'd actually see the footprint of the entire parcel, property on the lot, right?
Once again, it depends on how we define it. You can, you can choose either measure.
Just want to clarify for us and for the public, right? Also, as to Gene's comment about, you know, we're dealing with .5%. We're, that was as of 2022. I'd, I'd be interested to see some more updated numbers, and I've actually got a list of some metrics I'd like to see, and I'll get to that. But, but I think, Gene, what people want to make sure of is, is the houses on the wooded side of the island, that, you know, some of these houses age out, they're torn down and rebuilt. I think it's that, that issue that people want to see us manage going forward. It's not just the houses as they exist today and the .5%. That number could be much larger as we go forward. So that's a comment I'd like to make with respect to that. In terms of what I'd like to see before we move forward with any consideration, the 2022 numbers as to, you know, on the island, the house size, I think, I think we have to have more updated data. Is that available or not available, Matt?
Yeah, I can reach out to the county and see if they can forward us.
So that breakout of house size by square footage would be important to have. And then I personally would like to see a breakout of, of Oak Island lot sizes. Like, you know, if you look at the island, what percentage is, you know, 6,600, what percentage is over nine, what percentage is over 13,000? Then we kind of know what we're dealing with, right? And then for me, I, visual, being a visual person, to see some sample site plans with these floor area ratio limitations as they've been laid out from the council, it'd be interesting to see, how does that work with the setbacks and the height limitations? Just to kind of see some site plans and what, what is that really going to look like would be, I think, helpful for us. I don't know if anybody else feels that way, but that's me. And then also to Gene and Daryl's point, I think the non-conforming is an issue, and I think that we would have to know, first of all, if we did a 4,000 square foot limit, what does that mean? How many homes does that make non-conforming? And then I think it would be important for us to drive language that grandfathers those particular properties in to be able, if damaged over, what is it, 75%, to be able to be built at their originally permitted square footage.
That's already in the ordinance.
Okay, so that's...
Currently, under our, so what does a legal non-conformity do? A legal non-conformity means it was permitted and legally established, the rules changed, and now it would not be legally permitted. The way that affects a property from a, from a regulatory standpoint is some jurisdictions will set criteria on how that has to be treated going forward when you, when it's damaged, permitted, et cetera. Our ordinance in the UDO currently allows single-family residential structures to be essentially rebuilt exactly as they were, up to 100%. They could be totally destroyed as long as they're reestablished in the same way.
Okay.
And, and as long as the non-conformity is related to the unified development ordinance. So home-size zoning, et cetera, that's already in there in the ordinance, up, up to the full value of the structure, so.
So if it's damaged more than a certain percentage, I thought it was if the home is damaged more than a certain percentage, then you had to build it back to conforming standards. It was only if the...
No, for...
The damage was less than...
For, for residential, it's up to the full value of the structure. So that would mean that if it's totally destroyed, if it's a legal non-conformity based on unified development ordinance, you could reestablish that home as it was...
So, so let's be clear, let's be clear.
Commercial is 75%.
I think you're thinking of commercial.
Commercial is 75%. But...
KMA, if you're affected by KMA, that's going to be a different set of rules.
KMA and flood hazard are 50%. The, the UDO for residential is, if it's destroyed, it can be reestablished.
Could you bring that for us just so we can go back and make sure we, just at the next, go ahead, Matt.
I'll look it up right now.
I believe you, I truly do. I just want to lay eyes on it, and I apologize.
So I just want to be clear that for the public, people who watch in and for the record, we have currently protections in for non-conforming structures, correct?
But that's useless. So you're telling us, Matt, that if a 5,000 square foot house fell down and they blowed it up, threw it in dumpsters, that they'd be allowed to put back a 5,000 square foot house?
Yeah, this...
If yes, what's the purpose of making a rule? You're not making anything better.
It's only to stop the future 5,000.
I think what they're looking at is the older houses on the wooded section and some on the beach that are aging out. Somebody buys that property and decides to put up a new house. This would limit the size of the new houses being put up.
Yeah, but, but that's, that's, that's not what it seems like people are after. That means that if you already have yours and you don't, well, you still get yours, but they don't. That's, that's wrong. That's a hypocrite. I mean, just point blank, it's, it's hypocri, you know, that's being a hypocrite. If their house falls down, they have to build to the new ordinance. You get what you vote for. I mean, that's 100% truthful. So that should be taken out or changed.
I don't, I'm not sure.
If council members are going to vote for smaller houses, if their home falls down, they should have to live by that standard also.
To your question, Daryl, it's 9.4.2 of the unified development ordinance covers.
9.4.2?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll say that, that there's jurisdictions that don't even regulate non-conformities. There's no provision in there for non-conformity. How you regulate non-conformity is a policy decision of the town and ultimately the town council. So, I mean, I've definitely seen it work with several small towns that don't have any non-conformity ordinance at all. I mean, and if you have a non-conformity, it just keeps right on chugging along forever.
So, so Matt, just to clarify, say someone comes in, they want to buy two lots, one of the lots has a house on it that's 1,400 square feet. They join the two lots together, they can now build a 4,000 square foot house on it max, if that's the direction we go, according to the...
The floor area ratio, yes.
Floor area ratio.
Or actually, under either option. First option's 3,500 hard cap, and the second option would be the floor area ratio with the total cap of 4,000.
4,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's take that one step further. Let's say that they, they, they join those lots and they build their home, though, on just one of the lots. They use the square footage of the combined lots, but they build their 4,000 square foot on one of the two lots. The house sells, and then the next owner resubdivides the land so that there are now two lots again versus one. What happens in that? Can they, first of all, subdivide that land?
You, you will, you, you will have probably violated the unified development ordinance in doing that. So the only way you can split out, the only way you can subdivide property is if it, if the property then conforms with all of the, the zoning ordinances underneath. So if somebody were to split that, you know, build a 4,000 square foot lot on a combined lot and then split it back out, one, if they brought me a map to sign to do that, I wouldn't sign it because you will have, you will not conform with the subdivision ordinance. If you did it via deed restriction, you'd probably have a zoning violation on that piece of property when it went to sold because now you have a house, you will have created a violation by subdividing that property later on. And it, it does occasionally happen because people, you know, subdivide or try to split lots out via a deed or instead of getting a map recorded or something like that. But yeah, if there's, one thing we look at, if someone brings us a map to sign, is, is are there structures on the property? If there are, they need to be on that survey so that when we take a look at whether it conforms with the zoning ordinance, you know, let's say you build a house in the middle of the, where the lot is, and then you try to go split it out later on, you can't split that out because the house now doesn't meet the, the setback requirements. You've got a house across the property line. So you will have created an ordinance violation via that.
Thank you.
It, it, it does create some administrative headaches just because some of this happens at the register of deeds and not at the local level. But we, we, we've dealt with them in the past, basically.
So just, let me just wrap up. So, and everybody else can jump in, too. But so what, Matt, I think I'd like to see, just from some data points, is house size updates for the island, Oak Island lot sizes by size and by zone, and some sample site plans under the, the floor area ratio scenarios that are presented. plans under the the floor area ratio scenarios that are presented. And then on the nonconforming issue, like if we were to move forward, how many, how many homes would become nonconforming?
Yeah, absolutely.
As legally nonconforming as we define it currently. All right, thank you, David.
Thank you. Mark? I agree with a lot of what we've heard on what would be helpful. My list consists of definitely updated numbers on house sizes. The maps that were provided, if we could get larger.
Oh, yeah.
Maps of that is very difficult to read, though, and even with the magnifying glass. Also, I would like to see some information provided to us on what other jurisdictions here in North Carolina along the coast are doing in approaching this issue. So if we can look at some of that. And then any information that we could have, whether it be from the fire chief or other sources, but I just keep thinking of, you know, what we have seen this year alone with house fires. And we all know it's common when you have one, you're going to have adjoining houses either damaged or destroyed. And, you know, just the fact in knowing the larger the house, the more fire load you have. So just like to have any information or whether it's if our chief come and speak to us or something on that, but I think that's something that could be helpful in making the decision. That's all I have. David?
I would like to see the size stay the same, but take away a special use permit and give it back to the building department to be able to approve those plans. I think the house size is at the heart of the problem. We've tried to, the town has tried to attack the size of a house in every angle possible from, so right now, house sizes are limited by setbacks, stormwater, parking spaces, impervious area. You know, now we're actually going to attack the actual true thing that everybody's after, supposedly after, smaller homes. If you adopt a smaller size, I believe all the other homes should be nonconforming, clearly. And then if the house burns down, falls down, destructed through a hurricane, they should have to meet the new ordinance. Other, otherwise, that's, you're treating one part but not the other. So how does the town get to what these people supposedly want if they don't have to follow the same guidelines of it as everybody that's building new? That's, that doesn't make very much sense. That's, you know, this person can do this, but since you already have it, you can do that. That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem correct. Let it go with that. I think this is, I just wonder when the name of the island will change. Will they put HOA in front of it or HOA POA after the name?
Ellen?
Well, in anticipation of this issue coming before the planning board, I, I don't understand why people think that, you know, taking a little bit off of the maximum house size is going to solve the problem. I live on Beach Drive, and I'm surrounded by rental houses. And I, for the most part, see families that rent them. Occasionally, there's bad behavior at one of the houses, but the vast majority, there's not. No matter what size the house is, there's going to be people parking everywhere. There's a 1,400 square foot house across from me. One week last summer, there was 30 people staying there. They were well behaved in every other way. They were, they were wonderful people. So, you know, are you going to go down below 1,400 square feet? I mean, they're, they're, they're going to pack them in one way or another. And noise can be an issue, but noise needs to be treated as noise. It's not something we regulate here. Parking is the same. It needs to be, it needs to be handled as a parking issue. But anyway, in in anticipation of this coming up, I reached out to Councilman Chulo and Councilwoman Carter because I wanted to, you know, to try to understand their reasons for it and to try to, you know, express to them how I I felt about things. And I did invite them to my home because seems like, you know, a lot of us, we have differing viewpoints based on what our actual viewpoint is, where, you know, where on the island or the mainland we live. So, and I also wanted to show them, you know, examples of what reducing the house size is, it's not going to have any effect on things that upset people. But I do appreciate them coming and meeting with me, and I would say we, nobody's mind changed about anything, but I think it was helpful that we had a discussion. So I wanted them to see, you know, around my house, we have houses as small as 800 square feet, and we have at least one that is very close to 4,000 square feet. I'm not sure how many. It's, it's, it's a big one. So what I was, you know, trying to explain to them is that, you know, families come in all shapes and sizes. And there's a lot of families that aren't big, that rent the smaller houses. And then there are families that are big, that need a big house. And so the size of the house just dictates the size of the family that can stay there. I'm privileged to be a part of one of those large families. We are, I'm sorry, I, my throat's swollen because I had surgery. We number 35 now, and the family is multiplying very quickly. So that number is just going to continue to grow. But we gather together as often as we can, and my 80-year-old mother-in-law still cooks Sunday dinner every week for any and all that can come. And absolutely nothing makes her happier. In fact, it's pretty much what she lives for, is getting all of her family together. So for large families that aren't lucky enough to live close enough to do that every Sunday, you know, what are their options? They, they got to try to find a way to get everybody together so they take a vacation together. And so if you oppose large homes with a lot of bedrooms, then that's what you're opposing. Grandma wants to get all her kids and grandkids together for one week a year, and you want to take that away from her? I mean, you know, you know, often we see them celebrating birthdays, milestone anniversaries. I see a lot of balloon arches. And even weddings, you know, one summer, there were six weddings in the house next door to me, which, by the way, is 2,600 square feet. And I loved it because seeing other people happy makes me happy, you know? Or sometimes we've seen a different reason. Somebody's last chemo treatment that they're celebrating. Or worse, there's nothing where the doctors can do, so they want everyone together when last time. We've made a lot of friends, a family from Iowa that farms 1,800 acres of corn, a cardiothoracic surgeon from Pittsburgh, a North Carolina State Highway Patrol helicopter pilot and his family. Often, they come back year after year. And this year, as I watched on my TV the protests across the country of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict and saw all the hate and threats of violence against Jewish people, just to the left of my TV, through the window, I watched an Orthodox Jewish family at the house across the street, the big one, celebrating Passover, having their daily prayer services and celebrations. That family found a safe sanctuary here in our community, in a home large enough to accommodate them all and their religious services, and it was beautiful to see. I must say that I do not understand or appreciate the disdain with which Councilman Chulo speaks of these homes. And yes, they are homes. Any house with grandma and grandpa and all their family in it is a home regardless of how many square feet it is, or how many bedrooms and bathrooms, or for what period of time. The people in it is what makes it a home. They are a vital part of our community and our identity and the driver of our economy. They are havens for family to spend time together in this paradise we are lucky enough to call home. We have always been a community and a commodity, and we will always be both. To say anything else only speaks to your lack of tenure here. That's what we've always been, both. Councilman Chulo repeatedly mentioned 14 bedrooms and 15 bathrooms and other things like three stories, roof decks, elevated pool decks, full-time rental uses. This is just rhetoric. The state has repeatedly made it clear that it's no one's business how many bedrooms a house has and has repeatedly held up property owners' right to rent out their home. Of the homes around mine that are on the short-term rental market, all of them are used by the families that own them when they aren't rented by someone else, including the ones owned by LLC. That just means it's owned in a legally protected way. There's still a family behind it. What is the reason for wanting to reduce house size? You can't tell how many square feet or how many bedrooms a house has by looking at it from the street. We have large homes here since the 1970s, 50 years of large homes. So the character hasn't changed. We have large homes with only three or four bedrooms, and you would be surprised how many bedrooms you can get in a small home. So limiting square feet isn't going to stop that or the three-story homes. We already have height limits, front, rear, and side setbacks, stormwater retention requirements, tree and vegetation requirements, parking requirements, and impervious surface limits. And all of these things together limit the buildable footprint so much that most lots will not accommodate a large house. But if the lot is large enough, then a large house is appropriate for that lot. Other towns have no square foot limit at all. People bought property here believing they could build up to 5,000 square feet on it. Are we going to notify by letter every single property owner that would be affected and give them a chance to put input on this? I also expressed to Councilwoman Chulo and Councilwoman Carter my concern that a reduction in house size in the majority of the town, not just a certain area like a historic district, for example, and the things that have been said as the reasons for wanting to do that leans towards discrimination and violating fair housing protections. In our planning course we took with the UNC Council of Government, we were specifically told that saying things like protecting the character of our town is a red flag and could trigger a federal fair housing investigation. And then this week, I was made aware of a post that Councilwoman Carter made on the Oak Island Civic Alliance Facebook page about the committees that will have input in putting together our new land use plan, encouraging people to apply for those positions. A racist comment was made on that post, making reference to ethnicity and the large homes that are ruining our town. I anticipated that either the admin for the page or Councilwoman Carter would remove the comment or at least reprimand the commenter in some way, but that has not happened. In fact, the admin liked the racist comment. So it's still there. Not condemning a racist comment on your page or your post is the same as condoning it. The commenter then shared the post to her personal page and said even more. A person who could be described in that comment will likely be coming before council for a special use permit. Don't think that their attorney hasn't seen that. So now we've already gone down that slippery slope, and we've subjected the town to lawsuits and possible repercussions for violating federal fair housing laws. You know, given the way that I've seen people in a protected class treated when they were, you know, in the hearing for their special use permit and adding something like this to it, I mean, we definitely need our town attorney right now. So for all of these reasons, I don't support any change to the, what we currently have.
Thank you.
Every time we chip away at property rights, we're showing that we are not a family-oriented town. You're taking away the capability of a family being able to enjoy Oak Island. These large homes, some of them are large, and they have a lot of bedrooms. And they have really, you know, I haven't personally looked at it once or twice, but they have really high numbers of rental costs per week. Those high costs seem extremely high to a single individual. But when you take a family of 35 or 40, it actually becomes very affordable for them. You know, when they can use that house, you know, that's our future residents. You know, we're not only, we're getting more full-time people moving here now, which means they're going to need larger homes, not smaller homes. You know, we're pushing the family, every time we create a new ordinance or change, you know, a text amendment or something, we're taking the fameliness out of Oak Island, not not putting it back. You know, there's two ways to look at everything, but one way is pretty clear. When you make it where people can't come here because they can't afford to, even though we see this big number on this weekly rental, those people become buyers here. How would the tourists feel if they were in a email, if they got an email every time we change the, you know, text amendment or change the ordinance, and we told them why we're changing it? You know, we're making it harder for people to build homes. We're making stormwater more expensive. We're making it harder for you to come here and rent a house. We're, you know, everything. You, you know, we created more, we create a ordinance that says you had to have a parking space per bedroom. How do you think they would feel about that? What would we do if we lost our tourism? What would the town of Oak Island do? Maybe that's what some of the people of the town want.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. I, I don't think the intent of this is to discourage anyone from coming to Oak Island.
Sure seems it.
Renting property or whatever. But but I have a couple of questions, Matt, directed to you. On the supplemental regulations, just had a couple of questions. 7.2, 7.3, one of the tests is will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property. How do you measure that? How do you make that determination exactly?
Only one who can, in a judicial hearing, speak to property values is a certified appraiser.
Okay. So if you, because as I read this, these are the tests you undertake before it even goes through the special use permit process, right? Am I reading this right?
No, the, so since this is a special use, the applicant is required to show in front of, in front of council that they, that's part of the requirements and conditions test is that.
So the applicant would bring an appraiser certifying that they are not injuring the value of adjoining property?
They'd have to submit evidence to that. Typically, what, what would happen is if the question was brought in front of them in order to substantiate that evidence, you would need an appraiser to come in.
Okay, fair enough. And then 7.2, 7.6, if utility infrastructure is not adequate, the owner shall install such utilities as needed. So I think as I look at, you know, our visitor growth, what, what is that? I guess it occurs to me, what does that mean for our water supply, for our infrastructure on sewer, all these kind of things? I mean, who's, who's actually making that determination of, you know, these large houses and what their impact is to our, to our town infrastructure? you know, these large houses and what their impact is to our town infrastructure?
Yeah, I mean, that would go through public works to look at our capacity and what new development impacts and what is needed to be installed in order to, you know, public utilities are.
So there's like a formula for that? So a house is X size means it impacts the sewer system X number in volume? Is that how that goes?
Yeah.
And the same for water?
As far as I know, yes, ma'am. That's done through water and sewer.
So who's doing that?
There's a formula that's set by the state, actually, as far as determining flow rates for different types of occupancy and structures. Yes, ma'am. So the state sets the formula. And then when someone comes in and gets a building permit, we, public utilities will look at the capacity and the flow rate and determine whether there's adequate flow at that point.
Okay. Because to me, that's the big concern with houses is they are large, right? The water and the strain on public utilities, if there is a strain. I don't know if there is, but that would be what would occur to me. I understand people want to come and rent and come to the beach and bring their family and have all kinds of celebrations. I totally get that. But the practical matter is house size does impact our infrastructure and the number of people in those houses. So with that, I'll end there.
I just want to reiterate a point I made earlier, but I'm going to go into a tiny bit more depth, not much. My biggest fear, and I think house size gets into, I think it's a, there are hidden pluses and minuses, but my biggest fear is that in five years, everything south of the Davis Canal is going to be a rental property and there's going to be no one that lives on that part of the island. And I'm going to tell you, we do not want that. And I think we sit here and talk about house sizes and we talk about vacationers, but I don't know that we're really getting to the issue. And so as we think about house size, my, to me, I go into a home that's a larger home. I'm not advocating for any size. And if you want six bedrooms because you've got a large family or that's what you need, you can put six bedrooms. By the way, in full disclosure, I have four bedrooms in my home. I have an office, I have an exercise room. I have a little sitting area upstairs so that future grandkids can go watch TV while mom and dad might be sleeping, okay? But in the eyes of the town, that is seven bedrooms. I don't need, my wife and me, that's all that live there. I got to have seven parking spaces? I've got, you know, which decreases my vegetation? And I'm like, why in the world are we making it so hard for somebody? So now let's say we are going to have a 3,000-square-foot house, well below our minimum. But somebody really wants to build it and they're going to put six bedrooms or seven bedrooms. The whole reason why we're moving out of our house right now is because living area is great. Bedrooms are so tiny and the closets are non-existent. Somebody coming here for a week will put up with that. Somebody wanting to buy that to live here will not put up with that. That's why we're having to build another house. Something, because we can't physically add a bigger closet without making the bedroom even smaller. So I feel like we're not looking at where do we really want to be? We want to be an island that has a beautiful mix of residents. Because by the way, we are the ones that maintain the salad. We pick up the trash. We are the ones that care for the turtles. We're the ones digging and putting sand back in the holes left by the vacationers. That is where we need the balance of those people with the vacationers that reinforce. I'll, each of you, 5423, go down and ride on a winter. Go down at 5:15, 5:30. It is pitch black. No one on that street, not patrolled by our police. It's my wife and me and one other couple that live at the very end. If we were to need, if we were, you know, somebody were to try and enter into our home, we're not getting the police. There's no traffic, I mean, there's no overhead light for safety. The residents here are a complete side view to what, and we're dealing with vacationers and we're dealing with the size of a house because we don't want the cars. I feel like this is a bigger issue to my point earlier, and I really think we need to unpack this. And so I'm not saying that we defer on the house size, but I'm saying this might have to be an iterative type of a process until we figure out some of the other things to create incentives for people to see Oak Island as a place to live, not just vacation. And I just encourage us all to think in that way. Do what?
I have a two-page list of why this is the best beach.
Agreed. But again, I'm just saying, I think this ordinance and these things that we do need to be looked at from that light as well. So I'm off my soapbox. I just want everybody to know, this is our biggest strategic issue, in my opinion, is that in 10 years, we're going to be Holden Beach and the whole, everything south of Davis Canal is going to be a rental. And for half the year, it will be a ghost town.
I disagree. It previously has been a ghost town. When my husband and I moved in seven years ago, as far as we could see to the right and as far as we could see to the left, there was not another human being. Now we have a whole strip of full-time residents.
See, my.
And you're going to be the next.
Well, my block, my block, there were only two rentals on my entire block. Now there are only three residents. Everything else is rental on our.
And most people who buy what is today a rental house intend to retire in a few years.
I do agree with that. That is one of.
And they'll run into the same problem.
They're going to run into the same problem.
The same problem as you. But you, if you don't want people to come here.
I don't want people to come here.
That we don't want them to come here.
I don't want them to come here. I want there to be, I don't want us to try and think about one population at the sake of the other. That's all. I'm just saying, we've got to keep both in mind because there is a balance that creates this thing we call a community that we all want to go back and hang our hat on. That's all I'm saying, is let's think of both populations. And I'm not advocating for a house size one way or the other. I could make an argument, the smaller house size means smaller bedrooms to still make the economics work, and that's a house no one's going to ever occupy for residents. It's always going to be a rental. So, you know, they're, anyway.
Got one question. Parking has come up several times. We have an ordinance that says you have to have one space for every bedroom.
Per habitable room.
Per habitable room.
Habitable room.
That's kitchen, living room, office.
You can't regulate.
No, those are excluded.
Okay.
Not in the kitchen.
Kitchen, living, you get three exclusions.
What if we cut it back to just X number of parking places? Or X number of square feet?
Well, the reality is, no matter how many, what you see as what looks like parking places, they're parking all over the grass, they're parking over the vegetation, they're busting the irrigation. It's, they're going to park on every inch. And they're going to bulge over onto the other inches.
But let's, let's put this on a list to be evaluated because maybe there are things that we can solve for what you're talking about, but still limit the parking.
Before limiting what a property owner has to do or cannot do.
And, you know, like we said before, you know, they, but people have attacked the house size in every angle. Stormwater setbacks, parking, this, that, this, everything, trying to get house sizes down. And it keeps backfiring. You know, I'd love to see parking spaces go down. We could keep more trees. But that's not going to solve what somebody's looking for, which is smaller homes. It's amazing.
Yeah. Let's just deal with them all together, is my only point.
I'll comment on the parking. So like, so if we were to revise the language in the UDO, right? You don't have to have parking, a space for every habitable room. Does that mean those people then wouldn't bring cars?
Or park off-site, or park off-site.
They're going to park off-site, they're going to park on the street, they're going to park everywhere else. I think, I think what we were trying to get at, or what the ordinance was trying to get at, is to try to manage parking off-street, right? Keep people off the street.
Most people viewed it as an ordinance put in place trying to shrink house size.
Well, I will say that, for instance, the 1,400-square-foot house that 30 people stayed in, the only thing they did wrong was the overflow vehicles parked in the public access. And so now we have paid parking in place. So if they can't get on that lot, then they're going to have to pay.
To park.
Somewhere. So that has been addressed in that way. You know, I did call the property owner because I sold that house to them and I know that it has two bathrooms. That's a lot of use on two bathrooms for a whole week, but they were okay with it.
Tremendous amount.
And I mean, this, this group, I mean, they were wonderful in every other way.
But just keep in mind, the town council wants something September. They can review.
So what we need to do is, we need, as Carrie said, stop then for us to look at, get a visual on how many houses are currently over 4,000 square feet. We need a definition, how we're going to define floor area ratio. That's going to be the biggest topic going forward because that will affect this decision in more ways than one. Because if, Carrie, honestly, if we count the deck spacing, that's going to shrink the house way down.
Well, that'll just be next. You know, if somebody built a house this size today, but they wanted 2,000 square feet of decks, well, that'd be the next attack on home sizes or property rights.
I have as much porch as I have.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Exactly. Because where we live, the porch is livable space now.
And I almost live there.
I'm not advocating for anything. I'm just telling you what I read in the APA website.
Just getting clarity on the depth.
Let's get a clarity, let's decide how we're going, how we're going to define that because that is the most vital piece of this whole discussion.
Chair Bradley, do you feel like we have, do you feel like one meeting is enough for us to take all this?
Well, we've not been given.
I know, much. Can we do a?
We can do a special meeting.
Can we do a special meeting?
To have, to at least.
To hash this part of the process out. Because I truly feel, I know, look at Lisa.
Lisa, sorry.
I'll be gone from here till the next meeting, so I'm not, I'm not going to make it.
I mean, whatever the board needs to do.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, as we have time to ask the council for another month, we can be working on it.
Yeah, that might be the preferred, if we could just get one more. Because this, I mean, and Madam Mayor is here, she can at least hear. Not that we're trying to open Pandora's box, but we're trying to deal with this in a way that isn't creating unintended consequences. So she can maybe take back to the council, you know, our request for one extra month as the first answer.
Well, I think to Matt, I mean, we've got a list of things here, like, and I can just run through them for everybody.
If you'll run through those because that's what I was going to say, just clarify.
So the question was asked, how many SUPs and how many were, have been approved? Definition specific of floor area ratio, how we would propose to define that. House size update and potentially some larger maps, Matt, for those of us who have the need for closer-up views. Oak Island lot sizes by size and by zone. Sample site plans for each size under the floor area ratio proposal. How many non-conforming would be, would be derived by the limit to 4,000 square feet? I think Mr. Spicer asked for other municipalities on the coast. What are they doing to limit size? And then is there some best practice from the fire chief as far as what, is there some reason to link house size to public safety from a fire perspective? What, did I miss anything from anybody else?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Were we going to? Go ahead. Nope, nope, we got it. I got it.
My point is, Matt, how quickly could you get us this back? Because that would be the compelling question, right?
Yeah, and as I was going to update you guys in my staff report, we've got two council meetings next week to review the table of uses. You guys, this meeting is on the 15th of next month.
Okay.
So in order for me to have time to put that together, it would.
Going to push.
You know, if you guys put a meeting two weeks from now in between the two, I would have some of that done, but not likely all of it.
Just don't sleep.
Okay. Can, can we have a recommendation to request from town council to give us one more month?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Chairman, can I, can we take five?
Yes, we can take five real fast. I think we're getting ready.
Before we leave this, I would just, for anyone who's watching, I think this is really important for folks at home and folks in the audience. If you have ideas, if there are issues that we need to be at least aware of other than the ones that we're talking about, I think, you know, getting some of those issues to us, I think, will be most helpful because if we do have one sort of good turn at this, we'd like to be as inclusive of public feedback, comment, solutions, possible solutions to some of these issues as much as possible. So thank you, anyone who can provide that.
I'll make a motion, we take five real fast. We're back in session. David, you had a comment right before we broke for break.
I think I'm okay.
You good?
Yeah, I mean, maybe I've already explained it to somebody.
Guys, I think we have some really good notes that we need to get some further information, especially the conforming. That is vital. The number of houses that's going to be affected by this is huge. So for the next meeting, we definitely need those numbers and we need some legal advice as far as the legal non-conforming, what that's going to do in case of a storm, fire, and the such.
Yeah, absolutely.
So with that being said, next on the agenda is, well, you got the town council minute, board member reports.
I don't have anything.
The only thing I want to say as a board member report out is, first of all, we had another house fire this week and this thing, it's becoming way too commonplace. I would, I would hope that once our fire department, and by the way, thank you to our fire department, thank you to the neighboring fire departments that came in to assist. I would hope that our fire department can really help us try and understand what are some of the causes of these? And I don't know if there are forums that we can put on, if there are informational sessions, if there are webinars that can be led where residents can dial in to understand what some of these causes are and take some preventative action. I just feel like there, for some reason, I know some have been thundered, so we can't necessarily stop those. But I really do think we need to not just look at what's causing them, but mitigation. How can our fire department help our members, I mean, our residents be? Oh, I'm sorry, to help address the issues? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Public availability session. I will say this, this is wonderful. Thank you. I didn't see this, okay? But I would, a webinar where people can go back and look at it on their own time and really just sort of pushing this, this is great and I appreciate it, but let me tell you.
It is going to be recorded.
Oh, it is? Gosh, okay. Well, great minds think alike, right?
You were just announcing it.
But thank you to the fire department and all the other fire departments that help and our hearts go out to those who are impacted.
Mark? You good?
I think I've said all I have to say.
Okay, I did have a resident contact me and ask about parking on the west side. Noticed that a couple of houses had put in like gravel and was parking the whole length on the right-of-way and was asking about that. Can we have some clarification on that issue?
Yeah, I can very briefly let you know, it's something that council has discussed. You may know that they had several right-of-way encroachment requests, which is typically what you need to put something on a right-of-way. You have to get the people who control that right-of-way to grant you permission to put something out there. So it's something that is on their radar and they've asked staff to take a look at. That doesn't necessarily have to run through the planning board because it might not require an amendment to the UDO. It can be an amendment to the general code of ordinances. But we'll definitely keep you guys in the loop on that. We're working on the table of uses is kind of our next big item, but that's on their radar as well as far as what the town wants to say can and can't go in the right-of-way because some of it's DOT, but some of it's the town's and that's town property. You know, you couldn't go park in the middle of Middleton Park without getting permission from the town to do that, so.
So Matt, are they allowed to put gravel or, because I had a colleague on Northeast Fourth went in and they were at somewhere here asking about putting out gravel, what they needed to do to comply. And somebody came running up and I said, you can't do that. So is it, is it an application? I've seen them come to town council for those right-of-way easement grants.
The ordinance requires an encroachment agreement and really you need an encroachment agreement to put anything in the town right-of-way. However, council, Lisa can correct me if I'm wrong because I wasn't at this particular meeting, but council has requested that until they come up with a policy solution that no more, that they wouldn't be hearing it.
Okay, so it's sort of a hiatus right now until some, okay, got it. Thank you.
Isn't it correct that a certain portion of?
Isn't it correct that, uh, certain portion of the island, there's no right-of-way parking? So they wouldn't be able to request it because there's no--
That's something, yeah, that we'll need to be working through is, you know, if you're in the part of town where, uh, so south of East Oak Island or south of Davis Canal, um, that's area where our parking ordinances are enforced by the, the vendor that does our paid parking. And so from, during those paid parking hours, there's no right-of-way parking at that time. So part of that discussion that council will be having and staff will be helping them out with will be, you know, what makes sense for where? Because why would you allow somebody to install gravel that's going to be parked on when that parking's not going to be allowed from eight to five several months out of the year? So that, that's something that we'll have to untangle as we kind of go through this with council, yes sir.
Well, my experience, uh, just from watching it from my porch, the people staying at the house, as I said, it doesn't matter gravel, grass, plants, whatever, you know, they're, they're parking on every inch of it, to, to the asphalt and sometimes over it.
Yeah.
Whether anybody's getting tickets, I don't know. But again, parking isn't our, parking enforcement isn't our--
Well, honestly, I think the way the parking ordinance reads is south of the Davis Canal can out, you cannot park in the town right-of-way, correct?
Eight to five.
During paid parking times.
Yeah, paid parking times. And what they were inquiring about is the actual gravel put down in the town right-of-way and used as parking.
Yeah. Yeah, and there, if you want to put any improvement in a town right-of-way, I mean, it's town property, you have to, you have to get an encroachment agreement. There, there's a couple of things that are exempted, like mailboxes, you know, typical things like that. So that'll probably be part of that conversation as well, is, is our exemption list right? What does it need to look like? Things like that.
I'll just reply back, the town council's looking at that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that all for board reports? Staff reports?
Sorry, I don't have a formal memo for you today, but just a couple of updates. I already mentioned and I wanted to mention again during staff reports, uh, town council has two workshop sessions next week on Tuesday and Wednesday at 5 o'clock to, uh, work through, uh, what you guys recommended for the table of uses, supplemental regulations and definitions. So anybody who's interested, this will be happening, you might even get to see my son since it's at 5 o'clock. If anybody wants to come babysit, that'd be great. He's really easy. Number two, um, this is, uh, something that I want to make the board aware of. As you all know, um, we work under the, the guidance of the general assembly. They just wrapped up their session, uh, a week or so ago. One thing that, and, and I have regular calls with the, the North Carolina APA Legislative Committee, which monitors local, uh, act, or action at the general assembly. Right before they adjourned, uh, they passed some regulation for on-premises advertising, so on-premise signage. This was, as far as I understand, introduced and passed in one house and passed in a, a conference committee within about 48 hours. So it was, we have weekly calls, so it happened essentially in between a weekly call, it was passed and ratified. It, it largely deals with when the town can require somebody to remove an on-premise sign and what we have to do to do that. But one clause, uh, I thought was important, um, and I'll read it out for you. This is now North Carolina General Statute 160D dash 912 point 1, subsection B. This reads that notwithstanding any local development regulation to the contrary, a lawfully erected on-premise advertising sign may be relocated or reconstructed within the same parcel, so long as the square footage of the total advertising surface is not increased and the sign complies with the local development rules in place at the time the sign was erected. The construction work related to the relocation of the lawfully erected on-premise advertising sign shall commence within two years of the date of removal. And then finally, the local government shall have the burden of proof to prove that the on-premise advertising sign was not lawfully erected. So what does this mean for us locally? Getting back to legal non-conformities, this essentially treats all signage as legal non-conformity up to 100%. If it's removed, it can be replaced within two years to the same standard that it was. Not only that, it can be relocated. So usually, local ordinances require, say that you can't move a, you know, you, you're only allowed certain adjustments in the footprint of a legal non-conformity. This allows folks to move, you know, say you have a sign over here that the ordinance changed, the ordinance wouldn't allow it. Not only can they rebuild it, they can move it to the other side of the lot as long as it meets any of the setback requirements that were in place when it was permitted. And then finally, uh, usually when there's a legal non-conformity, the burden of proof is on the, the person who's applying for it. So you might come in and try to apply for something and I say, no, it's not allowed under a current ordinance and you have to prove that it was installed in a legal non-conforming way in, in order to claim that. This flips that burden back onto the town. We have to prove that it was not lawfully erected in the first place. So one I want to make--
They have to do that within a two-year period of time of--
Within a two-year period of time.
If it was taken down.
If it was taken down or if it was destroyed or--
Move it whenever.
Well, I was thinking more of some, where a sign did exist, they took it down, now they want to come back and re-erect it.
They, they could, as long as it's within that two-year period.
Okay, that's where I was trying to go. Okay, thank you.
One, I, I want to make this board aware because signs are in our unified development ordinance and this affects how we, you know, might regulate signs going forward with the knowledge that, you know, the signs that are already here, the general assembly has kind of cuffed our hands a little bit on, you know, how we can effect that change going forward. But also kind of to reiterate the point that, uh, you know, we're, local governments are under a microscope when it comes to general assembly action, so, uh, they, they do keep a close eye on us. And a lot of times what happens is, uh, a local government does something that the general assembly wants to remove and instead of doing a local act, they do something that, this is a statewide bill. It's not just after, you know, one particular, you know, town, but one town might be the impetus for, you know, passing a statewide rule. So, uh, always keep that in mind, you know, as we're going forward. It's not a reason not to do something, but it's just something to, to understand as we go forward, uh, with ordinance regulation and ordinance amendments that, you know, in the end, if the, the state comes back and says, sorry guys, no, no more, then we're stuck.
So you said it passed the house and passed committee, but it has not passed the senate.
It, it's passed everything. It's been, it's been signed, it is--
Oh, so it's actually been signed into law by--
It is law.
By the governor.
Yes.
Okay, so now is the process for us to go back and actually--
We don't need to do anything.
We don't need to do anything. We don't need to make ours conform with that, make sure it's not in violation of--
We don't need to do anything because it's, it's state law, uh, but basically, say, let's say there was a, a sign regulation that the, the board wanted to talk through and, and figure out related to the size or the, the square footage or the height or something like that. I just want you guys to know that any sign that's out there right now, as long as they replace it or move it within two years--
It's forever.
It's, yeah, it's for, it's essentially forever.
Now that's on-premise though, right?
That's, that's on-premise. Yes, sir.
Can I ask one question? On the ETJ, did they just strip Southport or did they strip all of Brunswick County?
Uh, the, the bill that passed only affected Southport.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Because I know they were talking about all Brunswick County at one time.
As far as I understand, that, that--
All of the state.
Yeah. As far as I understand, that, that's going to be a, a topic of consideration going forward